Board of Commissioners. We have a proposed agenda items items to consider. Time is eleven oh eight. And we'll call. We have Mr. Adams here, Mr. Mary Boy and myself. So we have full corn. We'll go ahead and go to the invocation. Anyone, Commissioners? Have the floor to provide the opening prayer? Anyone? Mr. Adams?
I'll do it, I'll do it.
That's what you're asking for us to step up?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity to be here. We're grateful for those who work in government. And we pray that we will all have level heads and that we will offer clear and concise input and that that our government officials will hear us and grant the desire of the hearts of those who live here. We're grateful for all that we have. We're grateful for this land and for our liberty. And these are things we say in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you very much, sir. Go ahead and the reading of the proposed agenda items, Mr. Vadam?
Okay, under the consent agenda items, you've got four items under there. You've got the approval of the January fourth, twenty twenty-two Commission meeting minutes, approval of the November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, to January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two check registers. Got an approval of a letter of support for the Utah Department of Health Healthy Aging Program and approval of the beer license application for the LaSalle store. Under recognitions, presentations and informational items, we'll have a presentation of the Denea College Microsite proposal here in San Juan County. It'll be presented by, I believe, Tristan Black, the project and legislative aide for this project. For the public hearing today, we've got our twenty twenty-two CDBG Community Development Block Grant First Public Hearing. Then we've got a public hearing on item number seven, which is a public hearing on rezone of Monticello Development Community. This is consideration and approval of a request for rezone from Monticello Development Company LLC. Under business action items, only three items today. Consideration and adoption of an ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eleven B and ord- amending ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eleven A of the San Juan County. Board of Commissioners redistricting the Board of Commission and school board voting districts as required by Utah statute. Item number nine, consideration and approval of a contract for the San Juan County Hazard Mitigation Program Grant Packet for Park Creek Fire. This is with Jones and DeMille for eighty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. The final item on your agenda, item number ten, is consideration and approval of a contract with JUB, engineering for LaSalle Drinking Water Feasibility Study. That Commissioners is your agenda for today.
Thank you. Motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Second by Kenneth. Any changes? Addition, deletion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
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 I also oppose aye. Motion carries. Three in favor, zero opposed. Next to the public comment.
Okay, for public comment, there I have three sign up sheets up here. If you do, and you haven't signed up yet and you're in the audience, please do so. We'll still afford you that opportunity. If you're here for the public hearings, just wait and then we'll open the public hearings for those sections specifically. For example, the rezone order this, I'm sure you're all here for the CDBG grant public hearing. And so when we open that up for public hearing, you'll be able to and invited to speak at that that time. This is mainly for the general public comments, for those that have just general public comments. So if you're wanting to sign up for those, I have three here, just as a reminder. For public comments, public comments will only be allowed for three minutes a person. We'll be timing you up here on those three minutes. When you're speaking, please obviously be courteous and kind in your remarks as you're going through, try not to be too repetitive on there. If somebody makes the comment in public hearing, Commissioners have heard you, they've heard that comment, so try to be. I have the microphone right here in my mouth, and so we could turn it up a little bit more in the audience if you can't hear us, but we should be should be fine on there. How's that, is that better? Maybe? Okay. Okay, with that being said, we will take those audience members first for public comment and then go to online. We are doing both today. We have a in-person public comments as well as online public comments that we receive as well. And so with that being said, on the sign up sheet for just regular public comments, looks like the first one I have is Scott, Steven Scott. When you come up, just state your name, your address, where you reside in the county, and then we'll go from there.
Great, thank you very much, Mac. I appreciate it. Appreciate a chance to speak today. I'd like to come before the Commissioners and ask for basically a letter for, there's a public comment period again that discussed a little while ago for Lisbon Valley Mining Company for their aquifer exemption exemption permit. And I would like to request a letter from the county, basically reiterating what the letter last year during the public comment period and the hearing for the UIC injection permit and the aquifer exemption from last year stated basically that it was it was not wanted in the county. And I was I was wondering if I could request another letter. There is another comment period and a public hearing tomorrow night as well in Salt Lake City on this matter. And that basically last year during the commenting through and at a Commissioners Meeting, I believe it was you, Commissioner Gray Eyes, that made a comment that, you know, we need to just say no to this, to the injection of sulfuric acid into our ground and possibly polluting our groundwater out in the Borough Canyon Aquifer and possibly the Navajo as well. And if something like that would be possible, that'd be fantastic. And anyway, that's my request. And I'd also like to request if a Commissioner could be represented at the public hearing. It's on a Zoom meeting and also in Salt Lake City tomorrow evening. I would very much appreciate that. And anyway, thank you for your consideration in this matter. And thank you for the opportunity to to speak this morning. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for that. Let's see the next one on here. Get back to the right one. Hmm, it says, Mr. I got DeGraw Vert Mint, Vent, Vent, sorry, sorry.
Different name. My name's Vent DeGraw. I'm a resident of Monticello. I have been for about eight years. I grew up here and moved away for a long time, but I'm back. Love it. Thank you for the opportunity to address the Commissioners today. I appreciate that. I've been involved in local politics, specifically county politics, for about twenty-five plus years in four different counties, not just here in San Juan, but other counties as well, and also representing multiple different parties, not just one party. My comments today are not directed from one specific party, but rather to the political process. And what I'm specifically talking about is every year, every other year, the county parties are required to have a caucus night so that their party membership can elect leaders and delegates to represent them at county and state levels. The county party has a responsibility to identify locations for those precinct meetings, identify leadership for those precinct meetings, train those leaders, distribute materials, and also educate to the public as to where those meetings will be held. My concern is any delay in the approval of the precincts and the voter registration list for those precincts causes a delay in the planning of those meetings. There's another factor that comes into play this year. Two thousand twenty-two, the caucus night was moved up a week. Normally, it's like the third Tuesday. This year, it happens to be the second Tuesday, March eighth, seven o'clock. That causes planning issues. So yesterday, it came to my attention, an article that was in the state media from KUTV regarding the the potential violation or apparent violation of open meeting laws that's now going to impact the abilities for some of these districts to be approved. Any delay in approving the precinct districts or the school board districts or the Commissioner districts means a delay in those voter registration rolls. Any delay in those voter registration rolls means as county parties, volunteers trying to organize and help our fellow citizens, we're unable to do that because we don't have the time to plan. We are now at approximately six weeks and we've got to find locations and train in that amount of time. So my request to the Commissioners would be, I saw that the minutes showed last month, last meeting, the ones you're going to minutes you're going to approve today, there was training about open meetings. Well, can we please follow those rules so we do not delay any further these maps and these voter registration rolls? As volunteers, we need the time to plan and it's getting increasingly hard. I'm talking twenty-five years' experience. It you just can't put it together over in a weekend. It takes time. So please follow the law and the open meeting laws and please get these commission districts, school board districts, precinct districts finalized so we can make our plans. Thank you.
Thanks, Van. Okay, the next one, I've got Ron.
Thank you, Commission. Appreciate the opportunity to visit with you. My name is Ron Nelson. Did you my address? Live in Monticello, but I'm here representing the San Juan School District. I am presently the Superintendent for the San Juan School District. So I'd like to speak to your agenda item number eight that is on your agenda, the reconsideration of the voting districts for the school board. I'd like to add just a little context to my remarks. You know, I was also as this as a new newly appointed superintendent when we drew the last boundary districts, when the special master was called and brought into the county. And being as the superintendent, I had the opportunity, he requested at least two or three times to meet with me. And he was very desirous to understand a few things throughout the county, such as he wanted to know about our feeder programs of which schools fed into which schools and where our bus routes around. He wanted to look very carefully at the the chapter house boundaries and how those were broken out. And he said those were very important. He also wanted to know where the incumbents lived and he wanted to have their very address. And that was a challenge because we the very address, but he wanted a dot on the map. He clearly let me know that being approving a map and making sure that it was constitutional by a one-to-one, you know, understanding the one-to-one vote principle was the highest priority. But he was very clear that there were other priorities that were important and he wanted to understand those. And then he, of course, drafted those maps and they were adopted. And we've been following those maps till this present time with the new census count. And we're now at the present time and we've gone back and forth. But I want the the Commission to be very much aware that that the present map that was adopted on January fourth, that is presently been adopted. Without a doubt, as we look at it through the school district eye, it keeps it follows almost all of these higher priorities. If first of all, it's constitutionally appropriate, does meet the one-to-one vote requirements, but it also looks very carefully at feeder programs. It looks at situations such as Eastland and since now, wait a minute, Eastland is right here by Monticello. It's a feeder program going into Monticello High School. It is best served to be placed in that voting district. It also is more representative of incumbents. It looks at where the incumbents residents are and it, for the most part, as as far as we can tell, does the best job of keeping the incumbents in their present district. So it's constitutionally legal and appropriate and it meets more of the very high also high criteria that is there's reasonable. I would advocate and ask the Commission to stick with that map and to realize that is the best map for representing the entire county with the school board situation. The map that is being proposed, I want the Commission to be very much aware, would place three incumbents in District Four. I'm not even sure how that plays out legally. We'd have to look into that. But there would be three incumbents placed in District Four. That would be a tremendous challenge to overcome. And I also know.
That's time right there.
Okay, I just also wanted to point out that I know with the county commission maps, the map that was presented by the Navajo Nation that had the incumbents in the same district was not even considered. So I hope you'll be reasonable and look at that. Thank you, appreciate that.
Thanks, Ron. Okay, that was all that we had for public comment here in the audience. Let's now go online. So if you're online, there is a function where you can click, right-click on your name and raise your hand. We'll recognize you. If you're wishing to make a public comment in general. Not seeing any hands raised. If that's the case and you want to make a public comment, go ahead and unmute yourself. Not seeing anybody unmute themselves, Commissioners, that today is your public comment.
Thank you. Well, go ahead and go to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I will second that.
Any further comments on any of them? Question, comments? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose aye? Okay. Three in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. Recognition, presentation and informational items.
Yes, this one here is the presentation of the Denea College Microsite in San Juan County. I don't know if Tristan, if you're online or whoever's taking Tristan's place. Go ahead and unmute yourself. Not seeing anybody unmute themselves.
Good morning.
Oh, hey, Marie.
Hi, my name is Marinez. I am currently the Denea College Vice President of External Campuses and Site. And the Utah Microsite is one of the site that I am supervising since October of last year. I wanted to introduce myself and I don't have a whole lot of reports to make besides that the Microsite in Aneth, Utah is ongoing and is still operating. And it hasn't been that long since it was put into operation in twenty twenty-one. If there are any other specific questions for me, I can answer those, but I was just sent this link not too long ago, so but I'm happy to join and just introduce myself and give a little bit of update on the Aneth Microsite. The purpose of the Aneth Microsite is really to reach out to the Navajo students that we have living in that area or the surrounding community to utilize our campus sites, whether they come there to inquire about admissions, enrollment, registration, online courses and other matters related to student enrollment. And then having a site there really does help our community there to have the student, potential students utilize the services there. We have a couple of computers there, a personnel there that is there Monday through Friday. Hours are limited from nine to four P M. every day. And so I want to say that much unless if there are any other specific questions about the site, I can answer some of those. And thank you for allowing me to chime in.
Question? Comments? There being none? Thank you very much, Misses.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation. Do you maybe a question? What other sites are proposed for this type of a operation?
Right now, we have, like I said, identified Aneth as a microsite. I think we have served, you know, quite a bit of students there. Basically, I'm collecting information at this point, how many students we receive at the site that are coming in to either come in the computer for their online courses. Since the pandemic, many of our courses have online services. So that's the only current one right now. And then just to provide some background information, we did have a Cayanta site that was open and it has closed many years ago. And then I don't know if we are looking at other site at this point, but the only one that we have currently is the Aneth site.
Okay. My position would be to look at those remote areas where students, for instance, like I'm from Navajo, man. Students want to continue their education. They have to drive to Kiat, which is eighty, over eighty miles one way. And that type of barrier. Are you still on?
I am still here.
Okay. Anyway, those types, those are what you're looking at is more of a accessible location. That's what I'm looking at or understand so versus remote isolated areas. Thank you.
Maybe in the future conversation, we could talk about that so that we are much more aware where services are needed if we are looking at another microsite in the future. Thank you for the input.
Good morning. This is Crystal Crewe with Denea College. I apologize for my tardiness.
So Crystal, maybe you can answer the question that was posed earlier, what other sites we might be looking at in the future? And the recommendation was to target the most remote areas.
Oh, I see. Okay, sure, I can provide some input to that question. First of all, if you would allow me, I would like to introduce myself. Hi, everybody. I'm the Director of Legislative Affairs and Special Projects at Denea College. And to provide some input about the question, Aneth was one of the first locations that we targeted because it had readily access to building that we could easily renovate and a renovation that didn't take too much funding to get up and running within at least a few months. It also had access to utilities and broadband in that area. So we targeted that building that was given up by the Aneth Chapter House. And it was an old Navajo Nation head start building. Other areas we are looking at, we would have to put together areas where we can pull in funding to try to build a site or even renovate another site. So in response to some of those remote areas, if the area has a building or even a place, a land that is withdrawn, where we can easily set up maybe a couple of mobile trailers and it would need access to broadband, readily access, those are key factors in starting up some of these sites quickly. In addition to that, we look at the feasibility of the number of students we can serve within those areas. So within some of these remote areas, there's not as many students who may need access to an actual physical building. They more or less could access our classes online, what is which is available right now. So about over three hundred and fifty courses we offer here at Denea College are completely online. So some of these sites we have set up to address and help meet the need of some students who don't have readily access to broadband. And this may be true for majority of the remote areas. And just to give you a heads up, when we factor in all of these different mechanisms and matrices, we we make sure that we can work with a chapter who's willing to provide a space or even willing to provide a land withdrawal where we can set up. Mexican Water, I believe, is another chapter who has been open to a setting up there. Another area we were looking at was Shanto area to Old Jato, Utah. So right now, we have different projects in place to try to advance the broadband and expand the capacity within Shanto all the way up to Old Jato right now. Just to give you a heads up, we do have some broadband requests that are going through the Navajo Nation Council. Hopefully, will be funded by the Navajo Nation ARPA funding that was given by the federal government. So we're currently working on that and hopefully within the next year or two, there may be a couple more sites we may be be able to set up. But moving back to Aneth, Utah, in that site, we hope to set that up as a permanent site, permanent delivery site and offer classes, physical classes there at the site and maybe expand on it. Aneth Chapter has noted that there may be some land in the area where we might be able to build a dorm as well. So we're looking at those and seeing where we might be able to gather funding to try to build some of those. And just to note, majority of our funding comes from grants from the federal government as well as the U.S. Department of Education. Right now, our tuition is fairly low, one of the lowest in the region. It is fifty-five dollars per credit hour, so we don't heavily rely on our tuition. But we do do our best to try to gather many of these resources to try to offer a quality education for potential students. One other area we want to expand on within the state of Utah is dual enrollment. So working with the local high schools to make our So working with the local high schools to make our Navajo youth and even those who may live in the area who are not Navajo to have readily access to college courses through a dual credit program. So that is one area I just wanted to note as well for the commission here. Again, if you have any more questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. See that there's no further questions or comments. We will appreciate the information. We'll be probably in touch. It seems like all those places that you mentioned are not so remote or isolated. I was thinking about Navajo Mountain. I'll leave it there and see. We have a school, federal BI school. I don't know. Might turn it into some other activities with it. So, thank you very much again. Appreciate your presentation. We'll go ahead and continue with our agenda. Thank you again. Number six.
Okay. Zoom out to number six. Here is our public hearing for the 2022 CDBG, which is the Community Development Block Grant Funding Application. This, the purpose of this public hearing is to provide citizens with pertinent information about the Community Development Block Grant Program and to allow for the discussion of possible applications. This public hearing will cover eligible activities, program requirements, and expected funding allocations in the region. The CDBG program can fund a broad range of activities, including but not limited to the construction of public works and facilities, which can be water and sewer lines, fire stations, acquisitions of real property, and provisions of public services such as food banks or homeless shelters. To give you an idea of a CDBG-funded project here in the past, we have an elevator here in this building that allows for ADA assistance to be able to access a majority of the floors here in the administration building through that elevator. That was one such project that was funded with that. But this also gives the public an opportunity, if there are specific projects that you would like the county to apply for on behalf of the county, this is that opportunity to do so. Some of the projects that staff that we've looked at, we have, you know, an opportunity where we could push in and apply for funding for the Spanish Valley Fire Station. For example, that was something that's been funded through this CDBG process. As well as you'll see later on in the agenda, an application for a feasibility study or a contract for, with Juve Engineers for the LaSalle Water Feasibility Study to try to locate and to establish a public water system there in LaSalle. Those are two examples. There's also a request that we've been looking at from another elected official in the county who is wanting us to explore the possibility of a chairlift going down into the basement to make that area as well ADA accessible. So those are just a list of projects. Commissioners, I turn it to you to open it up to public hearing. If you have any of the public that wish to make a comment or give some advice.
I'll make a motion. I'll second the motion for Mary Boy.
Okay, motion made by candidate second by Mr. Adams to enter to public here. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye also. Oppose aye. Motion carries three, favors zero opposed. We are now in the public here.
Okay, I don't have anybody signed up in the audience to make a public comment on the CDBG process or an application. Looking at online, if there's anybody online, go ahead and raise your hand or unmute yourself, either one. I'm not seeing any. Commissioners, I turn it back to you.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to close the public here?
Make a motion to close.
Motion.
Okay. Mr. Adams, motion, candidate second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye also. Three in favor, zero opposed.
All right, commissioners, that's kind of, you've heard some of my examples on there that we would look at to continue to explore making an application. Probably, I would say my top priority would probably be the Spanish Valley. Fire station would be a top priority and then going on from there.
Do you know what the allocation is this year?
I don't, on the total, no, I should have, I should have looked at that.
You think it's a hundred thousand?
I think it's a couple hundred thousand dollars for our region. But all of the cities also have an opportunity to apply for CDBG grants as well. And so typically, you have several top ranking projects that come from the cities as well.
Awarded on a region basis, right?
It is on a region basis, yep, yep. And so you typically, I think the, from the AOG, and I forget the percentages, but there's a specific percentage of the funds that are earmarked and targeted for affordable housing in this region. And so that comes from the top. It's mainly a priority that all of the cities, city mayors, county commissioners have prioritized for CDBG funds here. And so those applications that represent affordable housing typically.
Carbon emery granted San Juan, right?
Correct, yep.
So the, all of the cities and the commissions and those four will be competing for projects for that project.
Correct, yes, yeah. I think it was over two hundred thousand as well. So it's not a lot, it's not a big bucket, but we try.
Or would that, let's say, one hundred thousand be dedicated for?
So in there, they have a scoring matrix, obviously. And this is based off of HUD as well. With their scoring matrix, they're looking at those senior type programs, those that benefit those, that aging population as well as the, anything ADA typically tends to score a lot higher. That's kind of the HUD program. They target a lot of ADA project in communities, whether it's sidewalks, ADA access, things like that. And so that's why we were able to get the elevator because of that higher, higher threshold and that higher score that's attributed to those factors.
The elevator because of some horse trading.
I would imagine there's that too. Behind the scenes, there is that.
We didn't challenge it.
As I understand, we don't have a contract fire service for that.
No, we're still working on that one.
We're attempting to continue sometime?
Yes, yeah, partnership.
Is that included in the joint partnership agreement? Part of, is that part of the the understanding?
In that one there, so what we looked at for this, this next year is leasing a facility, about twelve thousand dollars for the entire year. Maybe just roughly around there. And the whole point why we purchased the property in the beginning was to establish our own fire station there. And so where we have the property, it's right now looking at total cost from several contractors in the area to find out what it would cost us to establish that fire station. But in the meantime, Moab Fire, we're negotiating right now a contract that would be a joint participation agreement, something that they will help us continue the fire services there until we're fully up and operational. We still have with the volunteers that have come forward there. We haven't even really vetted and sought additional volunteers through that area. We just have four that have come forward and said, hey, we were willing to do this. There's training that has to take place before we can turn the reins over to them a hundred percent. And so in the meantime, Moab Fire has, they're willing to continue to operate as if and help us through those by providing that service until we're fully up and operational, fully trained. It'll be something that'll be a touch and go between both agencies to determine when San Juan County and that Spanish Valley area can a hundred percent take it on their own. But until that time, we would still need their assistance and they're willing to continue to assist during that process of standing our own process up.
Is there a possibility that we can have a joint meeting with them?
With their board or just with the individuals? Yeah, sure, we can ask that.
To discuss beyond just the Fire Protection Service? Maybe other mutual agreement that we can make? Discussion up?
Yeah, we can, or I could either, either I can set it up just as you as the commission chair and myself and maybe their board chair, because they have a board of the fire district. We can all sit down or I don't know if we necessarily have to have a joint board meeting, but we can certainly just you and I and their chair and then TJ, their fire chief, as well as our fire chief, kind of all sit down.
Okay, that's a stop.
Okay, yeah, we can certainly do that.
Okay.
Oh, did I say something?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Adams.
You're aware that on the Navajo Nation, they have a separate CDBG program?
Yes.
With the Navajo Nation?
The region, aye.
All right.
We compete with all tribes across Arizona, I believe.
You should get a lot of money then, huh?
Twenty-one tribes. We do get quite a bit if the it's been, I don't know what, see, we have an office, CDBG office, Navajo CDBG office in Wonderra. And that was amended by Ms. James Etta, I believe. And I still, he's still there. And during the time I was affiliated with Skritsnaus writing proposals for them, I wrote several of them, they were approved. We, parlay extension is what I was concentrating on.
Yeah.
And we did obtain quite a bit of dollars. But the other thing is that merchant sources is what is really
For the funding.
Another major problems as far as if you want to get a CDPG funds, you have to put up some dollars yourself. So it was interesting. Anyway, that's for general information anyway. Anyways, back to the Fire Protection Service and Community Block Grant.
Yeah, is there, I don't know if there's any other, I did touch on, you know, the ADA access to the basement in this building. I don't know how far you want me to explore some of these other funding opportunities or potentials or where they would weigh out in your prioritize list in your minds last year.
Would there be other fundings for ADA from somewhere else? Like if this is a trial law, then we can live elsewhere.
Yeah. For government building modifications, all of your ADA should have been done a long time ago. And we could look at and explore different opportunities out there to see. ARPA funds would be a little bit difficult where it's not a water sewer infrastructure type project. So you're really, your CARES Act funds, there's nothing available. USDA oftentimes will have ADA grants that are available. We could look at exploring that potential. I just know that you're noncompliant right now today.
Safety issue. Okay. With that, go on to next.
Okay, the next one is the public hearing on the rezon of Monticello Development Community. This is consideration and approval of a request for rezon Monticello Development Company LLC. This one will have Scott give us the presentation and the overview. And then we can have, after Scott's presentation, open it up for public comments. There's several that signed up to speak to that one, so if you'd like, we can have Scott. Do you want to have Scott give his presentation first and then we'll make a motion to enter into public hearing after that?
Mac, you should have, you should go into the meeting like Commissioner Mary Boy wants to for Mac or for Scott to make his comments in the meeting.
It's like the ahs.
Who is that?
That was Alex.
So Alex, you're recommending go ahead and go ahead and open the public hearing up?
Yeah, that way. Correct, Commissioner Mary Boy's correct on that.
So Commissioner Mary Boy's motion is recognized?
Second.
Second by Mr. Adams. Question, if being done, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose aye. Three in favor, zero opposed. We are now publicly here.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to present here briefly. So my staff report outlines the history of what has led to this rezon request. I can reiterate that. So in just kind of an issue or a history of the land, in 2007, the Ranches El Camero subdivision was created. And it was also amended the same year in 2007. The amended plat has sixty-seven lots and it covers seven hundred and fifty-one acres. The subdivision had, there's roads that have been cleared. Some of them have been gravelled and also some water infrastructure's been installed. In 2007, the zoning allowed for this subdivision to go in. It met the requirements of the ordinance when it was created. The ordinance was amended in 2011. So, and this, this property is within the agricultural zone or the A1 zone. 2011, the ordinance was amended to allow all of these parcels in the A1 zone to go down to one acre in size. And then subsequently, in 2019, the zoning ordinance was amended. And all of this is attached to my, to my staff report as well. The ordinance was amended to allow down to quarter acre lots in all zones of the, of the county. And this allows with the approval, this is allowed with the approval of health, from the Health Department and the state of Utah for water systems and wastewater systems. So those, um, so that that went through in two thousand and nineteen. The there are also other areas that have been developed, the Elk, so this is the ranch, there's two developments out there. There's the Ranches at El Camello's and there's the El Camello's development. And, um, several road gravel roads have been built in the last, I think this one came about in two thousand and six, just before this two thousand and seven one. I'm not sure the exact year because it wasn't platted as a subdivision like the Ranches at El Camello's was, but um, it it's been fifteen sixteen years, um, largely several homes have been built in the last fifteen sixteen years, roads have been built in the area. Um, so the nature of the area changed with the with the creation of these subdivisions and subdividing. This, the other surrounding area and and most of this subdivision um, has largely been used and leased for cattle grazing. So they came, the the company that owns this private land came to to divide the property. They submitted a subdivision plat to the planning commission to to take one of these five acre lots, which is primarily the size, um, some of them are a little bit smaller, but primarily five acre lots in this subdivision down to, um, anywhere from around a third of an acre to three quarters of an acre in size. Um, to take advantage of that zoning change in two thousand and nineteen that allowed the smaller sizes with the approval of the Health Department. When they came with that request to the planning commission, the planning commission, uh, had a concern that we were allowing um, this kind of lot size in an agricultural zone and felt it would be more appropriate if it were in a residential zone. It's permitted in all zones according to that two thousand and nineteen amendment. But they felt like they wanted to call it what it was. They saw it becoming more of a residential area and wanted to to zone, they requested that they come back with a request for a rezon to a residential area. So that is what has led to this request that is before you now. Um, they they requested to rezon, um, eighteen point six nine acres, um, in the grant, it's it's property they own. Um, it's in the subdivision. They wanted to go from an A-one zone to an RR-one zone. Um, and I I attached our zoning ordinance that applies to both the A-one and the RR-one. The requirements are almost identical. There's just a few, a few things that are permitted, um, in A-one that are conditional. Um, like agricultural and business right, industry, those things are are permitted in A-one, but they're conditional in RR-one. A few other things, um, that are, that would become a conditional use, um, as more and more homes fill this area, they may not be want, they may not be wanting to be surrounded by large agricultural production. Um, so anyway, that was the, that's primarily why the planning commission felt like this should should be called what it is. It's more of a residential area and that chain, you know, that that change has begun fifteen years ago with the subdividing of the properties. And there's just a few things I'd like to read through the, for you to consider, um, when with you considering this rezon. First one of those is clustering of homes allows for fewer wells and smaller infrastructure such as roads and and also better protects the water, water table to have clustered homes with open space between. This proposal, if it proves to be economically successful, it will lead to a natural progression of increased housing density in the area. Um, and the already subdivided lots will probably follow suit. If, even if this rezon request is denied, um, the requested subdivision amendment can still be applied for under the A-one zone. It's still permitted because of that two thousand and nineteen amendment that allows the smaller lot size in all zones. So this still could go forward even in an A-one zone. This amended, this proposed project has, um, Health Department approval, which qualifies it to proceed under that two thousand and nineteen amendment. Um, some of the neighbors, which you'll hear from, I'm sure in this public hearing, they've expressed some disat- dissatisfaction with the development taking place um, to the, on the land to the north of the El Camello's. I think primarily most people are here in the El Camello's, maybe some in the surrounding area as well, but um, and they, I'm sure they will make public comment, um, in opposition to this rezon request. The fire risk in this area is considered low to moderate under the Wildland Risk Assessment by the Utah Department of Natural Resources. I would urge, encourage you to consider equal treatment of similar situated landowners in the area where they have private property rights to to take advantage of the ordinance in place. And just like many of you that will, many of those that will make comment are part of what have, they've built homes in the area over the last fifteen years that was twenty years ago, it was all farm fields and now there's homes there. So this is a natural progression in the area that that leads to this, um, next thing, and also that subdivisions do exist in the area and have existed. So um, the the county or the planning commission um, made a, they they motioned to request this rezon to you, that you request that you approve it. At their, let's see. This was at their November meeting. At their December meeting, they conditionally approved the subdivision plat um, contingent on what you decide today. So if you have any other questions for me, that's basis of my presentation.
Do we have any, uh, comments? Mr. Adams?
So what we're seeing on the screen now is not the subdivision plat that they presented with smaller lots.
No, yeah, that one, I, that one didn't get attached to this. That one is here though, if you would like to see it.
Well, I'm just
That, so what's shown on the actual, the actual thing?
Those are almost five acre lots.
As exists now, yeah. The subdivision plat isn't up for consideration, but I did bring it if you would like to see it. So that shows that, so the area that they're they're requesting the rezon is, this is lot sixty-seven, sixty-six. And it goes up five lots, so it's an area eighteen acres. That's what they, that's what they plan to do.
Okay.
And they range from point two nine acres up to point seven nine in size.
I'll just make a comment so that I, if my understanding's wrong, you can correct me.
Okay.
The county doesn't issue well permits or issue or allocate water anyplace in the county because that's a state function.
Right.
The state of Utah owns all the water and people can uh, make a permit for a well wherever in the county. And the state will decide whether that well um, should be permitted or not. And it's really not, really not a county function. What the county is concerned about, I believe, is uh, we have um, requirements for uh, building lots and setbacks and utilities where possible, but we do have some remote places in the county where people haul water because they, they don't have access to it either from a well or a spring or something like that. We do have places in the county where special service districts have been formed. And those special service districts have their own sewer and water systems.
Right.
And, um, again, those are regulated by the state, not necessarily by the county. Is that correct?
Right, yeah, and individual septic systems are regulated by the Health Department, the county Health Department. But this development, they've had to work with the state and they've been for about the last year and a half or so, they've been working with the state to get to where they are now, to where they can move forward with subdividing this size of lot. Because of our requirement in the ordinances, they have to have that approval first before we'll let them go to this size of lot. And so they've done that with the state. They've gotten the approvals they need to move forward with the plat. And the plat basically says, this is only permitted if they follow what the state says, because they'll have to come back in with more detailed engineering plans for the actual sewer systems.
So, so they are proposing a a sewer system for that area. Are they gonna set up a special service district for that?
No, because of, and that's what they, I think because of the size where they've been, they've reduced the size to eight lots. Um, they'll have shared wells, um, or a shared well, I'm not sure the number. And again, all that, the size of the well, the the number of wells, the number of septic system required, they're considering a more of an advanced septic system, not a traditional sewer, uh, septic tank with leach field. It's a, it's a, it's a small sewer treatment plant type design that would function. And then that's the actual sizing of that and how many lots that would serve. That again is all with the Health Department and the state on the sizing and the and the actual spec of that.
So our Health Department, when it comes to sewer, um, and I think at, at one point, I don't know if the ordinance in two thousand and nineteen changed this, but we used to require a one acre lot.
Right.
If you're gonna have a septic system for that or a house on that lot.
Right.
Has that changed because of two thousand and nineteen?
Yes, yeah, the two thousand and nineteen, under certain circumstances, it says it allows, um, development. I'll, I'll just read this. It says, unless lot, unless lot has access to municipal water and or sewer, which would permit development of lots for main use as a, as small as one quarter acre. Additionally, the county may also permit smaller lot sizes as small as one quarter acre in all districts. And then there's three requirements, um, for A, lots serviced, or there's three criteria, I guess, lots serviced by a shared well where the water source and septic are not on the same parcel and meet minimum separation standards required by the state. B, where alternate technologies can be utilized to eliminate the concern of water and sewer cross contamination. And also in C, when in the professional written opinion of the environmental specialists from the San Juan County Health Department, it is safe to do so. So they have met what they need for that, for us to say they can go down to this small.
So
it's a lot size.
So if they came up with an alternative system, then right, then generally, uh, an approved septic system um, that we've had in the past. I, I think there was a reason why we, we had one acre lots for those septic systems, but we ran into part of this problem down in Spanish Valley where we had several hundred wells and several hundred septic systems.
Yeah.
And they were all kind of in the same general aquifer and that's why there is now an approved water and sewer system in Spanish Valley is to avoid that. We're gonna have that a similar problem to that out in La Salle area.
Exactly, yeah, it's kind of that natural progression.
Future and and it looks like, you know, that that's gonna be something that's ongoing. So I'm just concerned that we don't have an ordinance that conflicts with reality.
Right.
If we have an ordinance that says you can have a one-third acre lot and have a septic system on it and a well. And you've got a cluster of homes that have septic systems and wells.
Right.
Say eighteen acres or something like that, I think I read. Eighteen acres, um, how many, how many lots are in that eighteen acre plat?
So he hasn't platted all eighteen acres yet.
Oh, okay.
But he's, he shows on this one lot that's, um, about five acres. He's showing eight.
So now we have, we've gone from a five acre lot to eight, one quarter acre lots or or something similar.
Smaller than an acre, yeah.
Yeah, smaller than an acre.
Different sizes, so.
And, and we're, and we're thinking that they might want to get approval for a water system and a septic system to to take care of those eight lots.
Yeah, so so in their plan, and the way we've done this on the, the, the Health Department, the way that they wanted us to do this on the plat was basically they, this note that's on the plat says, all lots shall comply with the requirements as set forth by the state of Utah for onsite wastewater systems. Plans for individual septic systems or one large septic system under five thousand gallons per GPD, I'm not sure what that, it's gotta be a gallons per minute, shall be designed according to the rules and regulations of the Department of Environmental Quality, the Division of Water Quality and the DQ Regulation R three seventeen dash four for onsite wastewater systems. Plans will be approved by the Public Health Department. And construction of the system will follow the approved plans and any deviation will have to be approved by the Health Department. So that's, that's the note.
So that, that means the, the local Health Department.
And they can go up to a certain size, the Health Department can do it for this scenario. Um, this original plat came to me with many more lots, all smaller than than an acre.
Yeah.
And and I told them, okay, go get your state approval. If they allow you to do this, then then we'll have our discussions here about the subdivision, but um, it came back and it came back, the, the result of the him working with the state and the Health Department was this plat with eight lots because the Health Department said, this is what we feel like he can move forward with and we can handle.
So is it, is it your opinion that this is the beginning of something that will continue to happen in the, in that area?
Most likely, yeah. If it, I mean, and that's the note I make in there for your consideration. I think if it proves to be economically viable, then yeah, I think we could we would consider that that would, that would probably be the future, would we move forward with this type of development.
Have you had any conversation with Department of Water Quality about what what they're proposing?
Um, I've been involved in the discussion back and forth. Um, I haven't had a specific discussion with an individual about this one. I've just seen their approvals come back and forth through emails over the last year and a half or so as they've worked through this. So.
It sounds to me like it sounds to me like the county ought to have some kinds of indication from Water Quality and Department of Environmental Quality about the water and sewer plant. I mean, all we're doing today is we're being asked to rezon it from agricultural to residential. But if we don't rezon it, they can still move forward with this plan if they meet all of the state state specifications, is that right?
Yeah, the, the, the planning commission only approved it if the rezon goes through. So they'll have to go back and work with the planning commission to see if they can come up with a and, you know, if the planning commission be willing to remove that condition, but as of right now, it's only approved if this happens. If it doesn't happen, then then they'll have to come back to planning commission.
They could go back to planning commission and still ask for approval in a agricultural zone.
Right.
Right? So the questions I have right now. Maybe Mary Boy's got some getting up in mind.
Kenny, do you have any, uh, comments or question?
Uh, no, not at the moment, just, uh, thinking about maybe deferring it to the next meeting and uh, asking the, um, Mac to see if they can leave the comment period open for about another week or so. I think my concern is almost tied to what Bruce is asking.
My question would be availability of water.
Yeah, that's a big question. I think that's a lot of what the questions you'll hear.
Has answered that or questioned that.
Yeah. And that, and that's primarily the, yeah, the response that we, we've we largely don't have control over it is, is the, because that property owners have the right to apply to the state for a water right to drill a well. And so
Do, do we have any indication how many wells have already been drilled in that?
You can look it up. I could go look it up. I haven't, but there is, it's all public, the, the Division of Water Rights has that on their website. I can go.
Well, I'm just wondering, you know, and and this is a state decision to make, but how many wells do they allow in an area? And how big an area?
Yeah, it's a good question and I, I don't know if they, I, I assume they follow a written ordinance or policy from the state, but that may be, that may not be true because it may just be But that may be, that may not be true because it may just be dependent on geology and I don't know. I don't know what their decision making is for that, but again, it's out of our hands, so I don't, I don't, I'm not sure of the process there.
Cause I know there, there is even some wells for stock watering.
Right.
In that vicinity as well besides the residential ones, so.
So on that basis, I think uh, Mr. Mary Boy's uh motion or recommendation to continue with me.
We gotta have a.
You have to bring that and question answered somewhere.
About the, about the water.
Water availability of water for the development.
And I could get a written opinion from the state if that's what you'd like, I can, I can request that they give us a statement or something. Because it is all handled by the state, so. Whatever you'd like me to do, okay? Any other questions for me?
Yes, and. Actually, uh, also, my request is to um keep the comment going for another week. And have the uh community respond to their concerns. So that way we can analyze that at, at the point when we're gonna either approve or disapprove the uh, the item.
I have a question for Commissioner Mary Boy on that, this is Alex Goble with the Attorney's Office.
Go ahead.
Do you want the, do you, do you want those submitted in writing over the next two weeks, Commissioner Mary Boy?
Two weeks, yes, that would be great, uh, writing would be good. And um if they have a, a, an area where they can call in, that would be good. As long as we have some uh comments from the, from the impact area.
Th- this is, this is uh Alex Goble, so um, we, we can accept written comments for the next two weeks. Um, Mac, if you just direct people where they, where they can submit those.
So we do have the public here as well that are wishing to make a public comment. So we can capture public comments today for our minutes. And then those who want to make a comment of this, we can direct them to Scott's email, our website. We can set up a link on there as well so that we can um collect specific comments regarding this item as well on there. Will that work, Alex?
Yeah, that's, that's fantastic, um, the written comments usually allow people to provide attachments. And that's usually more detailed than we can get through a, through a stated um comment as well, so that's helpful.
Yeah, that'll work.
Any other questions for me? If not, I'll let you take comment.
I have a question if you can hear me.
Hold on just a second, we'll get to public comments here and.
Okay.
Okay, with that, commissioners. We are already open in public comment, so we can turn now to the public. Um, to receive those comments, just as a reminder, I'll be timing you for the three minutes on here so that we can get through our meeting orderly. Um, the first one that I have here on the signup sheet is um. Yeah, uh, yeah, just as a reminder, try not to be repetitive in your comments as well. If we've heard it, um, you know, we've captured it in our meeting minutes as well as online. And so also try to be courteous and kind in those comments as well, appreciate it. With that, our first one on here, we've got Stuart Smith. And just as well for the record, just state your name and where you reside in the county. I'll be timing you, Stuart.
My name is Stuart Smith, I live in an area called Elk Meadows, my address is thirty-two forty West Blue Ridge Mountain Drive. Um, commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak. I've come before you to uh, like another of San Juan County residents have today in hopes that your voices will be heard. In helping make your decision for the request that developers have asked for to rezone an agricultural area from A one to R R one. The ranches of Elk Meadows is the second attempt to develop an area with no water, poor drainage and absolutely no services. It failed ten years ago and we zoned back to A one. I'd like to know, uh, well, I think Commissioner Adams has already expressed some uh concern about whether or not this will make it as well. One of my neighbors didn't have to dig too deep into the county master plan to find that the Planning and Zoning Commission. And made a decision that is in opposition to that plan. The chair of that commission recommended and voted against the proposal to grant this zoning change. His experience and knowledge was voted down by those on the commission with much less experience in being able to identify spot zoning. When questioned on it, they showed no concern for the reality of whether or not the developer will be able to make this a success. Not our problem, they answered. The Planning and Zoning Commission was visited last Thursday, asking that they reconsider this decision. And those speaking to the P and Z commission were turned down. You would be able to find this in the county record of the meeting, except by some odd quirk of fate, the minutes for that meeting on January thirteenth. Have been replaced with the minutes from the previous month's meeting. No record of the statements made by four speakers in opposition to the zoning change exist. Government and the sunshine doesn't work this way. These are shenanigans, shenanigans are exactly the type of behavior that should land someone in the dock explaining themselves or facing charges. Obus- obfuscation has cost this county a lot of money in legal fees in the past. The behavior of the P and Z commission should be examined and those found behind such a move, a move replaced. That is a distraction from the real reason I am here. Commissioners, the master plan for our county expresses in no uncertain terms that spot zoning and reduction of rural parcels. Under one acre in size are to be discouraged. Reasons cited include a goal of pushing higher density development into the incorporated communities in our county. Incorporated communities where services are available and the places for high density development exist. My neighbors bring the facts and reasons to you. Dave Bieber, another owner of twenty acres in the area is concerned about fire protection, this is a real concern. Many others cite the lack of water, planning and zoning officials when hit with this said that it is not of their concern. It should be. We are in a historic drought and those officials cast that argument aside and state that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed on the application. The same answer came back when asked about percolation of wastewater in the area, not our concern. In a meeting with Scott Burton, the county's own building official, on January twelfth, I was shown a plan where the developer would sink multiple wells. And create some sort of shared septic system for the homes that would sprout. However, on the documents forwarded to the only property owner, I'm done. I'm done, well, thank you for your time, commissioners. I hope you will vote to uh keep this A one and not change it to R R one, thank you.
Okay, the next one on here, please hold your applause. The um, next one I've been here, I've got Joe Mellon?
Thank you, everybody. My name is Joe Mellon, I live in Elk Meadows and um. Thanks, thank everybody for coming and supporting this spot zoning disaster, if it happens, hopefully it will not happen. Folks, two of the five people on the planning commission voted no on this proposal to rezone. The ranches at Elk Meadows from Ag to R R one, their reason, this is spot zoning. Spot zoning is when the San Juan County Planning Commission gives special consideration. To a big city out of town developer from Provo. Us people that live close by, all the residents, we have gotten little to no consideration. One person, one of our neighbors got notified last Monday through this letter. One person out of all of us got notified. If it wasn't for him raising the alarm Monday afternoon, we would have no idea what was going on. That, that is shameful, it's totally shameful that we were left out of the loop. This large development. And I, I agree, it is cluster homes. It has no business being out in Elk Meadows, there's nothing that looks like it. The only reason that it would even be offered out there is because of this developer is getting special consideration.
He's getting incredible money.
Folks, we need to uh, we need to put the brakes on this. Um, and I, I think the commissioners, all your comments so far have been very thoughtful. And I thank you for them and I agree with all of them. But, you know, the spot zoning is a bad practice everywhere it's used. When, when developers get special consideration. And we, the people who live here, get absolutely no consideration. There's something wrong here, folks, there's something wrong. I ask you, I, I ask you to vote this down and uh. At the very least, put it back to the drawing board and let us have some input as it goes forward. Thank you, guys. And thank everybody for coming, we appreciate it.
Thank you, okay, the next one we've got is James Perry.
Hello, I'm James Perry and we live in Elk Meadows as well. Um, I was just notified about this taking place just yesterday by one of my neighbors, there wasn't a whole lot of communication. But I asked some people I do know who understand and have drilled wells and understand the area. Just because um you desire to drill a well in an area doesn't mean there's water there, you have to go very, very deep and I'm sure everybody understands that. And my father recently went through all the avenues with the state to get a well, get the rights to it. And it's just sufficient enough for us to, to live out there. But things I do know, and I've talked to people, we do have the right to protest future wells nearby. That are going to be put up. And we, we could protest that because say if it pulling water from the same aquifer, I was told that if our water levels decrease, the state will shut it down. Due to them having that, that authority and, and owning the water essentially. And I just, I do understand that we've, we've, I don't wanna be repetitive. But we do know that a five acre plot development is very different than these small ones. And there's a lot more infrastructure that needs to be put in, a lot more regulations to be put in these smaller. And I'm not sure, um, he does have to get the, I guess permissions to put the water in. But to develop this, I believe you have to have the water first and. In my opinion, if it's advertised with water without the water guarantee there, that could be problematic in the future. Um, say they do get water there, I don't believe out there has the water sufficient to support that many homes clustered. And that's very problematic and if that goes through and that, all those houses get put up or that, those areas get developed. And they find out they don't have, that's very problematic, very hard to sell little plots in this kind of agricultural area without sufficient water. That's essentially my concern is just lack of water, I've met a lot of people and. It, there's just no guarantee what you're gonna get when drilling a well out here in San Juan County, we're in the second driest state in the U S. And San Juan County is one of the drier counties and the second driest state, it's just not a guarantee. And um, you just look at the population of rural southern Utah, th- there's less infrastructure because there's less water. It's just can't support huge populations coming in without sufficient water. And that's basically all my thoughts, I thank you for your time.
Thanks, James. Okay, the next one on our list, I got Robbie Philcorn.
Good afternoon. I wanted to make sure that everybody got my handout, if not, do you, okay, did you all get my handout?
I got two of them.
There's one with a spot at the top of it. Did you, you guys have it? Okay, okay, so my time is starting?
It has, you're two forty-five.
Okay, so I'd like to say good morning to the commissioners and all my friends and neighbors and thank you for coming out today. Um, I'm here to clarify what spot zoning is and what it looks like. And on your handout, the one with the spot on the front of it, if you could look at that spot, there's a photo underneath. This is an A one zoned area and if you look at the items that are in that photograph, you see a farm and roads and fields. But there's something that sticks out in there that doesn't fit in, it's out of place. And that is what is known by developers as spot zoning. The definition is there, a parcel of land is singled out and rezoned for the special benefit of the developer. When it does not conform with the general plan, by the way, do you all vol- uh, follow the general plan? That's my question, so it doesn't fit the general plan, provides no similar level of benefit to the owners in the surrounding vicinity. So this is a picture of spot zoning, if you look on the backside of your handout, please, if you could turn that over. I was interested that the planning committee did not provide to you what the actual intent is, that subdivision. So if you look at that, you're gonna see the proposed plan from an out of town developer, which has eight lots on less than five acres. And repeated four times to see how that goes. And this means that you're being asked to approve approximately thirty-two homes on nineteen acres. While the surrounding lots all have about one house on every five or, or ten or twenty acres or what have you. And, but actually all around me, everybody's been saying, what are they gonna do for water? Because everybody knows there's no water up there, I mean, agents know, the cows that are even up there, no, there's no water up there. So um, you know, luckily for us, we have our county general plan. And on the handout, you can see only two of many citations that the county general plan will provide guidance for your vote upon. So when you're asked to vote on this, you can see that the general plan guides you on page thirty-three. That the future land use map is a legal basis for zoning, the core concept of San Juan County's development directs future growth. To areas where existing or planned growth, infrastructure services can support it. And to locations within adjacent or existing communities, that's pretty clear. And another one out of many, page thirty-four, we're guided that the land use goals and policies of San Juan County will seek to facilitate. Orderly and fiscally responsible growth by requiring residential developments. To locate within existing communities or areas where the services are provided at a level that will meet the demand. Of the development, so your decision has already been made, it's all in the general plan. I think the zoning is going to be turned down. And if you do decide to rezone, that means that what you're doing is approving what's on the picture here on the left-hand side. Over to the right-hand side, none of us were notified except for one person that's gonna happen to. So, thank you for your time.
Okay, the next step we've got Sue Halliday.
Sue from Dallas. My name is Sue Halliday, uh, I'm from San Juan County. I just wanna make a comment uh that if this proposal is accepted and has been put into effect. I'm afraid that it will move on down the river, on, on down the road to, to eleven. And they would start developing uh various resorts. And I don't think that, I don't, we, we as San Juan County want San Juan County to be pristine. We want it, we want it to be beautiful and I've heard so many people, we don't wanna like a Moab. Well, if we're not careful, we're not only gonna be like Moab, but we're going to be worse. So please, let's be careful because this is one project. But it's, if it's passed, it's just gonna move on throughout the county. So let's all be careful and care about where we live, thank you.
Next one on my list, I got David Byber.
Hello, commissioners, thank you for giving me the opportunity to voice my concerns. I've been a Landover resident of Monticello, San Juan County since early seventies. I've been a Landover resident of Monticello, San Juan County, since early 70s, and I was one of the first people to buy out of Elk Meadows. Our lot's 20 acres. Uh, we have a well, and we have a leach field and septic system. When we first came out there, there was plenty of water. We went 120 feet down. When we turned off the 191 under the 331, Peter Springs Road, half a mile down the road, there was a pond. It wasn't a lake, it was a pond, but it was full every year, all the time. That disappeared four years ago. It's come back once, about six feet. That's it. The water level's going down. My neighbor, who's just building a house now, drilling the well, they told me they had to go down over 200 feet, and they're at the same elevation I am. I do know that the concentration of sulfur and iron, which is prevalent out there, okay, because it's known as a place that's got good water, but limited. I know that the concentration of that has affected my filtration system, which is pretty extensive to remove those. And now I have to think about drilling my well deeper. We're in a drought, and it's getting worse. And I've been told that the snowpack has to be 150% of normal up on the mountain there for 10 years for us to even get a chance, let alone Lake Powell, that's 160 feet down, which reflects how the upper Colorado's doing, and that system that Utah counts on, we don't really count on Lake Powell. So my concern is water. There simply isn't enough out there. And for you not to consider it, or the planning commission not to consider it, I request that you send this back to the P&amp;Z and ask them why they spot, why they spot zone this, okay? It didn't work before, not because of water, because they were having five acre lots. It happened because they couldn't get a perk test. They couldn't have a sewer system. And you're right, the comments, how many sewer systems can you have? How many wells can you have before it affects the aquifer? Well, the aquifer's already been drained. I mean, it's going down. We've, we've not had horses. We've not brought animals on because we have small above-ground gardens, and we know that water is precious out there, and we have to be concerned about it. Now, a comment was made that this is a low fire area. Well, tell that to the people in Colorado, okay? Because houses burn. And when you put that many houses together, and we have winds, do we have winds? All of a sudden, we've got a fire problem. I'm asking you to send this back to the P&amp;Z. Delay it, postpone it, or reject it, but do not approve it, because more facts and more issues have to come to light. We've just found out, we need more time to get organized. Thank you.
Okay, we've got Mark McLaughlin.
Not much more to say. Hello, commissioners, nice to see you. Thanks for your service to the community, and thanks for letting me speak. My name is Marco McLaughlin, and I moved here in April, and I love this community and all the people. But I also came from a community that was very similar to this, and the development is having its consequences. I come from Bayle, Colorado, in Eagle County, and it was a rural community. And, um, changes from agricultural to residential zoning has had its cost, to the point where there's taxing on the water tables, there's taxing in the sewer, there's taxing to the fire district, there's, it's, it's taxing the whole community. When you talk about economical viability, yes, it sits there now. We're in the highest state of inflation we have ever seen. It's going to change. You can't have prices this high for this long without it being a crash at some point. So be careful what you approve now, because you'll have unintended consequences of something in the future. I think that my constituents here should also think about this 2019 amendment that was made, reducing the ability from one acre, I think you said, to smaller acreage, really should be considered, and you might want to start thinking about making that change from that level. And if water's a concern, if you're all telling me that it's a state-level concern, guys, we've got to write a letter to the state, have them start getting on it. And if the sewer is an issue here, we need to get in front of the, the county sewer commissioners, whoever handles it, and tell them we think there's some problems out here from real-life situations. So we need to make sure our focus is in those areas if we really want to have this happen. You know, I started coming to Moab when, about 25 years ago, beautiful signs come to our area, it's fantastic. Those billboards have changed. Please respect our areas now, what it says. Be careful, Monticello, San Juan County, the beauty that you have here, we're the redheaded stepchildren. I want to be that redheaded stepchild for a long time, and I want to be part of this community forever. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, the next one I've got, Greg Colbroth. Hey, Greg.
Good, oh, afternoon, gentlemen. Glad to be here, and I'm glad you have a few minutes to hear me. I unfortunately have, uh, some considerable experience in the water and wastewater business, and I'm a resident of Elk Meadows. I can tell what the depth of my well is by watching the pressure gauge that I installed at my home. My well is 600 and some odd feet away, because that's where the water is. There isn't any water on top of the rock, and that's where my house is. But I didn't want to build there, but my wife did, and so we were on top of the rock. But I will say that the, uh, when you look at, I have a near and recently departed neighbor, David Gillette, who's trying, who was trying to build, uh, a house for he and his eight kids. Well, if you have eight kids, and a lot of people do, that's 100 gallons per person per day, okay? So that's 800 gallons per day for that single home. Now, if you have a few acres and eight homes, you can multiply it out just as well as anybody else. And, uh, it turns out that in my experience, developers always have a very nice picture of, well, this is the wastewater plant that we have in mind, but that's almost never what gets built. It's kind of like having the internet at Navajo Mountain. The, the information superhighway should have started there and come to town rather than the other way around, it being out on the internet dirt road. So you have to have the stuff first. You know, you have to know that the water and the wastewater is going to be taken care of first, and how that's going to be done. I've seen several developments that come in with a nice picture, that's not what got built, and it didn't work, it was a complete failure. And when you think about having 3,200, let's say, um, gallons per cap at a day on two or three lots, and then you're going to make them 25 acre or 20, a quarter acre lots, and as far as you can see, it's unlikely that there's going to be that much water. I've seen the, the water pressure at my home, which varies with the, the amount of lift that the pump has to provide. I see it fluctuate, you know, on a regular seasonal basis. And every time that it goes down, it never really comes back as far as it used to. So I'm, uh, pretty well convinced that that many lots, there just isn't going to be that much water. And I don't know the, how long it's going to be before it gets better. I think maybe it will one day, but until then, I don't know. I've seen a lot of, of things that sound good, but don't quite pan out that way. So I thank you for your time, and I do appreciate it. Have a good day.
Okay, the next one I've gone on here is Lynn Martin.
We have just heard 11 good cons, things that are against, uh, making the decision for this, these proposals. Uh, I don't know what the pros are. In fact, when we were talking with the, the zoning people the other day, I did propose a question, what is the need that has been established? And they couldn't answer it, because I don't believe it has ever been established by the developers or anybody else. And if there is no need, then you have to make a conclusion, then the development is for greed. And if you can't establish the positives, then you have to look at the cons. The cons wipe out all of those pros. So thank you very much. You've been great people to talk with, and your comments have been wonderful. I just really appreciate you. Please vote this all down. Anything that destroys what we have here in San Juan County is a travesty. And don't be the ones who take the hot potato from the zoning commission and end up being the ones who end up biting the dust because of the hot potato they've dumped on you. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, the next one I've got is Carol Van Steeder.
Hello, commissioners. I'm Carol Van Steeder. I live one county road over from Elk Meadows. And, uh, most everything that I was going to say has already been said. So I just, uh, I feel like, um, the developer may have gone through all the proper hoops for the planning and commission, planning and zoning commission, for them to review it. I understand how they look through, uh, and have their check, their boxes to check off to see if they've done everything correctly according to law. So where, with the planning and zoning solely reviews those items, you, Commissioner Adams and Commissioner Gray Eyes and Mary Boy, um, you can vote according to right and wrong. And, uh, you can take all of this information in, and then you can also say, yeah, that's, this isn't, this isn't the plan for San Juan County, this doesn't, this doesn't seem right. And I, I think that you are here representing us to look at the big picture, and I have great faith that you will, and that you do, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, that was all of those that were signed up on the list to provide comments. Let's turn our attention online. If there's anybody that's online that'd like to make a comment to this, not seeing any hands raised using that function. If so, go ahead and unmute yourself. Looks like I've got a Mark Culligan.
Yeah, um, my question is, just taking into account where we are in Monticello, there's not, uh, overabundance of high-paying jobs. So my question is, who is the target market for this? All the water issues aside, that should be the trump card in this whole equation, is that there's not enough water out here. But who's the target? Who are they planning to move in here?
Sorry, Marcus, for public comments, this isn't a question-and-answer period. Do you have any other comments?
I guess, when do I get to be able to ask the question?
You could pose those to our planning director, that'd probably be best.
The planning director?
Correct, Scott Burton.
Scott Burton?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment online? Go ahead and unmute yourself. Not seeing anyone else. I understand that there is the developer here today. I don't know if the developer wants to make a public comment as well for the record on here.
Yes, sir, may I?
Okay, go ahead.
First off, I appreciate all the comments.
What was your name again?
Bryant Black. My name is Bryant Black. And I appreciate the comments, one from the citizens of Monticello, also for you guys thinking this through fully. I think part of our plan has been, um, blurred. The main point of this is to actually donate the land through a conservation easement. Part of us being... Part of us having to do that is to develop part of the land. So the 56 lots that are supposedly going to be developed, it is not that, it is the eight, and only the eight. When it comes to the water, I feel like there's been some miscommunication about drilling wells. The wells have already been permitted, the wells have already been drilled, the wells have already been, by Russell Sealy of the Southeastern Department of Utah Health, has already approved the plan, one for the septic tanks, the, um, water, and for everything to go through. So in order for this to be approved, just like Scott had said, we are doing this out of respect to get the residential zoning with the agricultural zoning. Because of 2019, it can and most likely will go through no matter what. And I did this out of respect in hopes that you guys could come together and understand our plan to donate the land to the government to save the sage grouse. And what we hope to do is to continue this project, and that is all I would like to say.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other comments, commissioners. That was, that's it for the day, for the public comments for this item. So, yeah, we just need a motion to pub, close the public hearing aspect of it, but there was a comment made regarding the minutes that were posted. We did check on that. Typically, when you have a planning commission meeting, the minutes aren't approved until the next meeting that takes place. So here in January 13th, um, those minutes will be posted, or from that meeting will be posted, um, after they're approved here in February. So there was no minutes that have ever been posted or taken down or hidden from the public as we wait until the next planning commission meeting. And so we didn't want to follow up with that clarity there.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
It's a motion by Mr. Adams to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
If there's a question or comment, all those in favor, say aye.
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 And aye also. Opposed by nay. Three favors, zero opposed. Motion carries. Next.
Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Chair. Thank you again to, um, we're out of the public, um, comment. And, um, again, I'd like to go back and direct Mr. McDonald to give it more time and to, uh, just like Goble says, keep the comment period open for two more weeks. And let's take it back to the commission meeting, um, until the next meeting. That's my recommendation.
Is that your motion? We need a motion, I guess. Not a recommendation. Motion, okay. Is there a second to that motion?
No second.
Any further comment? Continue the public hearing process for two weeks. Get all the questions answered. See if there's a, um, what do they call it? More water? Pay to the gods? Great gods.
Something.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Aye myself. Three, three favors, zero opposed. Motion carries. Okay, next.
Okay. We are now on, and we'll, we'll create a link on our website, it'll be on the front page of our website, so that you can make a comment through that form. page of our website so that you can make a comment through that form. We'll let some people leave here real quick and we'll jump on. Okay, looks like we're there. So under business action items, we are on number eight of the agenda. Let me get to it, which is consideration and adoption of an ordinance 2021-11B, an ordinance amending ordinance 2021-11A of the San Juan County Board of Commissioners redistricting the Board of Commission and the School Board voting districts as required by Utah statute. And it looks like this. Okay. Okay, a couple of items on here, Commissioners, you, we did receive that, the letter from our county attorney, his office, just noting the concern and violation of the Open Meetings Act where we had two commissioners in electronic meeting. And then.
First of all, I have not received that letter or memorandum. It's been mentioned here and there. No idea what.
It was a part of the packet that we mailed out last Friday. Would have been the second or third item in here. Let me spin to it really fast. Right here. All right. I know, seriously, huh?
Oh.
Well, what, what does that notice of, notice of void action? Say, Landwitch. Mr. Vidal.
Is Alex still here?
Yeah, we do have Alex online. And I think Kendall was on.
Ken, Kendall, Kendall's in front of Judge Humes at the moment, so he's not available. The notice of void action simply means we need to wait two weeks to correct the Open Meetings Act violation so that proper public notice can be given out. So if we just put this back on the agenda in two weeks, that should correct it.
What we had received, just to further enlightenment on here, is the email from Liz Thomas that stated on here, dear Commissioner Mary Boy, thanks for agreeing to forward this ordinance and associated N-N-H-R-C, which is an acronym for the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission, School Board, District Map, to McDonald with instructions to put the ordinances and map on the January 18th, 2022 agenda. If you have questions or cues, please contact Mr. Gorman, Steve, or my, or me. I'm speaking for Liz. So on here, we heard, we had received the training last commission meeting regarding electronic meeting. If two commissioners take place in a meeting and decisions are made. On this email, it appears that there was a decision made in the fact that Liz states on here, thanks for agreeing to forward this ordinance. So there's a lot, what it appears like, there's a lot that is taken behind, taken place behind the scenes, whether it was a meeting, whether it was electronically. So a physical meeting, phone conference call, or an electronic meeting with two commissioners that constitutes as a quorum. Some decision had been made, discussions taken place, and there's this agreement to forward these items from that meeting or from that discussion that not all parties, not all commissioners were represented at, or nor did the public, where it wasn't done in an open public meeting. That was the concern that prompted the letter from the attorney's office.
So this transaction or communication is, you set a decision was made, which to me indicates that that it will be put on the agenda. That was the only focus. It does not say we will approve at that time of this incident. A lot of people, I guess, straddling a running horse, getting on, together on, on this to either they face us, the two of us that were involved. And I'm sure they're flying high with it. But to me, that reads
Mr. Chair.
That reads that there is no decision. All that is said is an agreement. And generally, what do you do? You thank a person for presentation? That's, that's all that was about. Like, to me, that's what it says. Mr. Mary Boy.
Mr. Chair, we have an item before us. The item that was passed January 4th. And I did, made a move to pass the item during December 21st. A regular commissioner meeting. To approve Cooper's Plan B along with the Navajo Nation School Human Rights. And it, ever since then, the item for the school board was remodified. I still did not vote for it. We have this, and for some reason, we have all this smokescreen. We never usually have our attorneys around or available at the time when we have a meeting, but they seem to be available now. So with that, I still stand my position to where I move to approve the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission School Board District Plan Eastland Adjustment. That's my motion.
So number eight, you made a motion? Mr. Mary Boy.
Yes, I have.
Okay. It reads consideration and adoption of the ordinance 2021 hyphen 11B, and the ordinance amending ordinance 2021 hyphen 11A of the San Juan County Board of Commissioners redistricting, the Board of Commission, and the School Board voting district as required by Utah statute. I will go ahead and second that. Any comment or Mr. Adams?
We've been advised by our attorney that we're violating the law by doing this. But I guess my biggest concern is if we approve the map, we are putting three incumbent board members in the same district. And that, that, that seemed to be a problem when the Navajo Nation proposed a map that had Commissioner Gray Eyes and Commissioner Mary Boy in the same commission district. We didn't want, we didn't want to do that. But now this map puts three incumbent board members in the same district. So I, I'm not going to support it.
The, the one that we approved previously, where Mr. Adams motioned, I seconded it. The modified B.
Right.
There was no information regarding if that modification does have impact effect on other districts. There was no, no one afforded information. Later I learned there are impacts.
For the good.
And which places question in my head. And that's, that's what I understood. So that's the reason why. As far as having three district members, I mean, district board and one school district. Did you get in the air? I see you're communicating with Mr. Mr. Gorman.
So, and there, they raised their hand as well on here. So I don't know if you want to afford them an opportunity to speak from the Navajo Nation Human Rights. If you want, I can touch up after, after them. And so let's see, Lauren, I think it was you. I don't know if you're there with Gordon or if you're tag teaming this. Maybe you can explain it or I can read.
Thank you, Matt. Can you hear me? This is Lauren Brunelli.
I can.
Thank you. I just have a few comments to make. And first of all, we'd like to put on record that all of the school board and commission districts are single-member districts. What this means is, is only one person can be elected from each district. There can be multiple candidates from a district, but at the end, only one person is elected to represent voters in that district. Now, this brings the issue up to whether there should be a special election in the school district with respect to once this ordinance is passed. I've looked at the policies at the website for San Juan School District. And when I go to Policy 2220, which is the Board of Education elections, that whole document is missing from the website. So whether these terms are staggered, you know, we need to do some research in this arena. But as, as indicated by the special master, redistricting is for the people, not the incumbents. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. So in essence, that's, that's what the, the email that I had received. I had asked that in the email to Leonard Gorman, Lauren CC'd on there regarding, you know, was it their intent that they not seat incumbents in those district modifications? And that's pretty much what they had mentioned is that they are single-member districts that are voted in those districts. And so I, and maybe this is my limited understanding, but those, those terms aren't up. They're not due to expire this year. The school district elections take place in two years. Is that right, Ron? You, could you come up to the mic just so that those people online can also hear this? And so we do have Ron Nelson with the school superintendent here as well to help through this.
The district voting are, it is a single-person voting district. But they are staggered. Our three districts that represent our districts three, four, and five would expire at the end of this calendar year. No, make sure I get this right. One and two would expire the following year. So they're staggered on a multi-year thing. And we are seeking information from the state because we are being guided by state code on how to, to deal with it in the event that more than one incumbent was in the voting district. From what we understand right now, and I will not say that we know this definitively, but we have certainly are being led in our initial readings to believe is that if there is more than one incumbent in a district and they're, one of their terms ends, then that person then would no longer represent. And the, the, the person that continued that still had more tenure left would continue to represent the district in which they lived. So you could have a board member from Blanding or Monticello possibly representing Monizuma Creek for a year because their terms are an additional year. I don't know that that's exactly. We are seeking input, but that, that is how we read it initially, that there is a possibility of that happening. Anyway, we're, we're trying to sort that out as well.
We're trying to sort that out as well.
But do know that they stagger.
Yeah, go ahead, Alex.
It's governed by 20A 14 201 in the Utah State Code. And the only information we would need to gather from the school district is how many of those incumbents would have terms that would extend beyond this election year if they remained in their district. So then that's going to be governed by subsection B3. It's detailed. There's a lot of analysis. I can't go through it on the fly in a meeting, but there is a code that governs. but there is a code that governs how we would have to treat that. A special election may be required, but we'd need to get the exact details of which district they fall in and which district, the one whose term expires where they fall.
That the person whose term is, that is presently representing and that their term would expire at the end of this year is the board member that lives in Monizuma Creek. Their tenure would expire at the end of this year. The other two live, one lives in Blanding and one lives in Monticello, and their terms would continue an additional year.
Okay, so, so that'd be what we follow up with, Mac.
Okay.
Mac, this is Lauren too again, and I would like to also add that the uh current school board members that live in this district also have the opportunity to resign to allow for the special elections to move forward. Thank you.
Thanks.
Chair.
Mr. Maryboy.
You know, the incumbent issue is not a major problem. The state has ways to deal with incumbents all the time. And I don't, I don't see why we're, like I said, pulling up a smokescreen. It's something that we need to deal with because you really look at it. The opposition is positioned the same on, on the side of the people that are going to be impacted as well. And I call for the question.
Um, before. Okay. The question of Mr. Maryboy calls for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye also. Opposed nay?
No.
Okay. Motion, two in favor. Want to oppose?
Why do some people get to talk and make comments and others not? I would like to make a comment before you make that motion. Have people online that get to make a comment? I can't. You guys are ignoring the people of Monticello area. You're ignoring them.
Thank you.
Well, it wasn't my comment.
Oh, going next to uh none.
All right. So continuing on with our agenda and item number nine, consideration and approval of a contract for the San Juan County Hazard Mitigation Program Grant, Pat Creek Fire with Jones and DeMille for eighty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. This one here, um, you had seen, let me jump to it on our agenda. We did go out to a request for proposal for engineers to provide this service for us. Last month, you had entered into an exclusive right to negotiate with Jones and DeMille uh to negotiate that contract. We have done that. Um, and then this is kind of that next step that we're at. And so here's before you the final contract that we have. This will be, I want to just point out that there, there, this will be in phases. So we have Jones and DeMille assisting us up until we um prepare the bid documents, go through bid, um work with contractors on questions and answers, and then the selection of the contract. Then we will have to come back and amend the contract at that point in time for construction administration. Um, and so we've written in here that there is a, a second phase to this approach. Um, whereas at a later date, we'll have to come back. We'll also have to, to um negotiate um further terms and a further cost um with that second phase. But right now, this gets everything underway, gets us to design um construction bid documents, selection of the contractor, and then we'll come back in later on for the, the finalization of this. We thought it was important that we keep the, the engineer on board as we make the selection of the contractor. But furthermore, as the contractor goes about implementing the design and the construction of whatever is designed here, uh, we wanted to make sure that Jones and DeMille are there through the end of the project so that um they could validate the contractor's work according to what they've designed. Any questions with that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Adams?
Second.
Okay. Any further question? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye also. Opposed nay? There being none, motion pass.
Okay, the next item on your agenda is consideration and approval of a contract with J U B Engineers for the LaSalle Drinking Water Feasibility Study. Um, this process here is a little bit different, um set up through administrative rule R thirty-three dash five one oh five with the state where the state's already gone through and, and pre-approved engineers, architects, mechanical engineers through a system as long as um you're under a hundred thousand dollar threshold, this meets that. And so in that process, you go out and you speak to um specific engineers or engineers on that pre-approved list, um solicit qualifications from them. We had done that back in September twenty twenty-one. I used um some of our staff here to go through and evaluate those qualifications from the qualifications. Then you reach back out to those engineers, the one that had the highest score and solicit a cost. Um, J U B Engineers have, have responded to that. They had, their proposal came back at sixty thousand dollars. And what this is, is they will work with the county um to solicit other funds, whether it's grants, um ARPA funds or whatever throughout the state, see if we can get somebody to, to help us with this sixty thousand dollar ask. Um, and then we will begin that LaSalle Drinking Water Feasibility Study for all of the LaSalle area. Um, try to get to the next step as we, I mean, last year and some, some of our public comments, you had heard a large um concern coming out of LaSalle. Um, similar to Pat Creek is just the availability of water on that mountain, um replenishment of aquifer. And so this will kind of help um hopefully snowball into a future public drinking water system up there. But this is the first step, first stages of getting that process going.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Adams' motion?
Second.
Second by Kenneth. Any question? There's none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye also. Opposed by nay? Zero. Motion pass. Commission report. Any? Mr. Adams is itchy to hit the road there.
Yep.
So let's see.
Yesterday I participated in a service event down at Blanding. Lieutenant Governor and Burgess Owens and State Treasurer and a lot of the staff members and congressional staff came down and we split and loaded fifteen or so pickups full of wood and took it to Westwater Community and stacked it by their homes. It was really a good event. Um, today I'm on my way to Salt Lake. I have a UAC board meeting in the morning and, and um the legislature starts meeting today, so I'll stay up there probably just till Thursday and, and then return home. That's all I got to report.
Mr. Maryboy.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you uh very much for those of you that had um come to view and be part of our commission meeting. And those of you that were on the view in, in of our commission meeting. Please be safe, take care of yourself, look over one another. ADC has not changed its policy on, on um social distancing mask. So my report on February eleventh at nine AM, we will do teleconference with the Resources Committee of the Navajo Nation. Some time ago, we had a meeting with the Resource Committee on Road Issues. And at that point in time, they were instructed, also been recommended to re, regroup again. And that regrouping never happened. So now we've uh got that out of the way. On February eleventh, nine AM, we'll be teleconference. The issues are going to be on the um, on the road and also the uh, the police San Juan County. So be advised, I've been on telephone with the um, our council delegate and our council uh delegate from Money Med Valley as well to uh talk about these things. And then the, the other one is that the um, on the twenty-third, Utah Dennebikia was planning on doing its tenth anniversary. But they postponed that due to the um, the pandemic and to the new omega or whatever it was called. So they postponed that. And then the other one is that I attended the chapter meeting at Anna Teleconference, yes. And um, some of the concerns that they have, they're under um underway with developing the new chapter. And they will be uh, uh starting to recognize some areas and locations to uh do a new chapter. And that funding was approved through the N R F uh some time ago. I, I made that motion and that's, that's coming down. And then also the same chapter, the Veterans Organization. On the Navajo Nation, it's really hard to get funding for veterans. There is really not such thing as veterans funding for any Native American, as you all know. During the Treaty of eighteen sixty-eight, the treaty, its clause says that the Native Americans shall not bear arms. Well, again, the federal has ignored that and many of our Native Americans were involved in the major conflicts, all the way from the Cold War to Vietnam and all the, all the way to Desert Storm. To make matters more interesting, the Navajo language was used to win a war. But yet in Washington, it still states that Native Americans shall not bear arms. So it's really a struggle to bring a fundings to the Native Americans on the reservation. So a group of veterans in Anna's chapter decided to talk about developing um uh a nonprofit, have special funding, set a site and to have an office and a veteran memorial. Some time ago, when I first became uh a commissioner, I met with a gentleman by the name of Mike Dimitri to see if he can help me find and locate some of these equipments. We looked into it. And um, we found some uh old attiliaries and some old abandoned tanks and stuff like that. We wanted to bring those back down to uh, to decorate the memorial park for the veterans. And we never got to it by then. He was uh going out of the office. So we're really looking at all of those things. I don't know what, what helped it. I'm gonna be able to pull, but I'm gonna give it another whirl, see if we can do that. We're looking at the Navajo Trust Fund. We're looking at the uh, the N R F Fund and other major uh corporations for sponsorship. And to develop a five oh one C three, we're looking at an already developed a five oh one C three. We're looking at the um, the, the UNXS, the old um, Utah Navajo Development Corporation and some other nonprofit organizations. So that kind of keeps us really busy and then, and the election took place and the new individual that's ahead of the Veterans Organization in Anna is Hank Lee. And of course, our former police officer Terry Lee is also sitting on there. And we've been contacting the other chapters uh that not just on is very interested, the same as uh Denahodsoe and um Tisnesbus and other chapters have not uh, uh responded yet. But Red Mesa is also interested in it. So a veteran memorial park can be located either on the reservation or off the reservation on a public land that's, that will be considered to be used for that. More of the central area for the seven chapters. So those are the things that we're kind of um, um going at and working on that and hoping that it was uh, that it would pass. And I see that the uh, the state of Utah has passed a mass mandate. It looks like our little buddy Mike Lee's jumping up and down for no, no. But um, let's hope everybody be safe and we want to keep everybody around as long as we can. So with that, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. That will conclude my uh report.
Thank you. Where's uh? I don't know exactly where to start. The uh seven county is meeting, I believe, this Friday. And uh road sections, development, proposed developments are up for discussion badly with the uh Book Cliff Road which starts, I believe, uh Vernal, between Vernal and Roosevelt up north and comes down to uh Highway eighty and then paved road, uh section of it. And uh, that's, that's the main issue. I don't know what uh here that uh this project has been going on for thirty-five years. And the uh the seven county infrastructure uh correlation. the seven county infrastructure coalition has three point two million for can be an assessment. But there's a lot of people and opposition in Grand County, Moab. Who's gonna take care of that highway if it's built? Maintenance, who's gonna take care of the public safety? Who's gonna take care of the emergency? There's no designation as to who will be responsible for. So their assumption is that Grand County is gonna flip the bill. And they don't want to do that. And I don't know what position other counties have been, as as far as I understand, they were the former commission, there were three of them. They were in support. Eventually, the public didn't agree with them. And they were replaced. Now they have seven commission who are not in support of this highway. So and I asked, how many minutes will it take from Vernal to what is that dinosaur? All the way down close to Grand Junction back to get a get to the point over here, Arch National Park? The difference, if it's developed, calculation is about twenty minutes. Twenty minutes difference. So that's in the books. And then the other question I had was, when do you get an I seventy? You get on a four-lane highway. Then it stops right at the junction of what the one ninety-one and I seventy. So well, I don't know exactly the history of it. And mainly the I seventy or the proposed route, they assume that it's gonna be particularly beneficial for oil drillers, pump station, transport system. It will be there for them up on the upper basin. But the lower basin, there's nothing. Dry wells are there, but no, 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 no. So that that's the issue. As far as other commissioners that are on the seven county, I have no, no no ideas to what their position is. And that's that's gonna be an issue and a concern that will need to be addressed. And San Juan, Grand County Commission want to discuss those also in the George session. And as far as the fire Protection Service contract, it was evident that San Juan County had a contract for those services. And they was just our luck that they went ahead and addressed the wildfire. And there was, they occurred several weeks ago.
Yeah, the contract continues to go on. We haven't terminated.
Yeah, so that was the benefit. And some things like that, they wanted, you know, talk about even levying some some dollars. And and I asked about extension of what do you fire district? They said, fire districts are established. And I don't know, it could be extended into another county, which I didn't get the answer for. So that's where this needs to be addressed. The others are where where what I'm doing is giving information from the Navajo Nation to have stakeholders either by virtual meeting connection to see if we can talk terms of how this we can deal with the Navajo Mountain Road Project connection between Navajo Mountain and Ochito. And I was very concerned as to how the the Grand County asked me to delete that Book Cliff project. And said, I don't, I need to know what their positions are of other county commissioners first before an attempt to be made. Secondly, a high impact would be if my southern project, if my, if the project up here is successful in terms of how the it's gonna be handled. And the the, I guess, the the application includes that the state will be responsible for all the construction, maintenance and whatnot. So if that's, if I take that off, what's the impact it's gonna be on my project? I said, there's there's a lot of difference. I said, here's the state taking over. Down here, it's a guarantee when it's built. The B I A through the Navajo Nation Division of Transportation will take take on the total one hundred percent maintenance responsibility. So that's a guarantee. So those those issues are still wiggling around in front of me and at other functions, like seven counties, Navajo, outside chapter and so forth. There's possibility of a opposition at some residents, but we were able to come up with a different route. And so those are some of the things that I I will be working on, trying to set up a meeting sometime. Hopefully, the the seven county commission also infrastructure coalition also submitted an application for one million dollars for planning of the road connection between Ochito and Navajo Mountain. So those are in the works. With that, maybe sometime we'll talk about Mr. Adams brought out one four-lane re- redesign of the road some time ago, as I remember. So bypass Moab, go through the deep canyons and yeah. You remember that?
Yeah, I didn't. I didn't have any suggestion about bypassing Moab. I just talked about four lanes from Spanish Fort Canyon down to the Colorado border and the Arizona border in San Juan County.
Yeah. Well, nevertheless, it's a bypass. But that would be, at that time, I suggested that they build something like the the pay bridge. And they has two decks, one going
one mile, one to split.
Four lane or six lane. But those are some of the things that we're still wrestling with. That'd be extended my report.
Make a motion. We adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Kenneth. And time is, okay, let's see.
Aye.
One fifty-one. All those in favor say aye. Aye also.
Aye.
Opposed. None, three in favor, zero opposed.